Good afternoon and welcome to the March 14th, 2019 work session for the Henrico County Public School Board. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Our first order of business is a closed session for the discussion of matters covered under Items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the following: Assignment, Appointment, Performance, Disciplining, and Release of Contract for Specific School Board Employees in the Mission and Discipline of Specific Students. Members of the Board, is there a motion to go into closed session for those purposes?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augmiron, I'm sorry. Is there a second? Seconded by that man on the end down there, Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has it. We will now go into closed session. Members of the Board, at this time it's appropriate that we certify closed session. Is there a motion that we certify that only those matters identified in the motion going into closed session were discussed and only those matters which are exempt under the Freedom of Information Act were discussed during closed session? Is there a motion?
So moved.
It was moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The closed session is so certified. At this point, we're going to move one item up on the agenda that is currently under new business, Henrico Retired School Personnel Association, and I would call on Mr. Pike, if you could introduce our guest and lay the groundwork for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the most difficult jobs I have is serving as the parliamentarian for this organization. I am the only male on the Board, and it is a tough group of women. My wife is even on this Board, so I'm telling you all that in full disclosure. It is an honor and a privilege to introduce to you this afternoon Tina Whitaker, Jackie Warren, and Lee Reynolds, and they are retired educators just like I am, and they represent the Retired Education Association for Henrico County. This is an important organization because they do a lot of good things. They offer scholarship opportunities for our students and also scholarship opportunities for our teachers, and this afternoon they just wanted to share a little bit of information for you and maybe plant some seeds as to how we might be able to work in the future. I think Mrs. Warren is going to be the leader.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today. I think between the three of us, we have 100 years of service for our classroom teaching dedication that we've done over the years. The Henrico Retired School Personnel Association has about 350 members. We've been in existence since 1991, and we're made up of all Henrico retired personnel, which would include bus drivers, custodians, teachers, administrators, and friends of education. We have some people that taught in the city of Richmond that come to our meetings and so forth, so it's friends and retired personnel. And we're actually here today to ask for your help because our membership has been falling over the last few years, as has membership in lots of organizations has, and we feel like our retirees are just not getting the message as to how important we are to them. We're sort of their first line of defense when it comes to retirement benefits, which I think everybody in this room will receive at some point. And a good example of that, we've been fighting for years now to get the $4 health credit for our support personnel. Custodians and bus drivers and people who have been full-time for 30 years do not get that $4 per year credit that teachers and administrators get. So we have been lobbying for that every year. But because of privacy laws now, we are not able to get home addresses and home telephone numbers in order to follow up on people who do retire. We have a packet that we send out through the pony to each retiree. We do get their names, and we'll send a packet to them, but you all haven't retired yet, so you don't have any idea how much information you get at the end of your career with all the things that you have to fill out for the VRS and so forth. So when it comes to what's important, the retirees' association is a little bit down the line. So because of that, we're looking for ways that we can reach these people and continue to reach them. We're here to support the school system, and Lee's going to talk a little bit about the things that we do, and Tina's going to talk about some of the things that we've done with our legislators to make sure that we are supporting the endeavors of what you're trying to do, what retirees want to do, and so forth. But anyway, we'd like for you all to be thinking of things that might help us to get people more involved, and we're not talking about a huge amount of time on the part of being involved. We have two luncheons a year, and our dues are $25 for three years, so it's not a huge investment of time or money. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lee.
Until I'm retired because I'm a little bit disabled. That's for teaching kindergarten for 32 years and sitting in those little chairs and sitting on the floor and trying to get up. But anyway, I'm here. As Jackie has said, the three of us have over 90 years of investment in public education. If you multiply this by the 350-plus members that we have, just think about how much support and expertise you have to help you so that all Henrico County's children will have an excellent public school experience. We want to emphasize the fact that our organization is open to all Henrico County public schools, even school board members, not just teachers and administrators, but also secretaries, clinic attendants, bus drivers, counselors, custodians, cafeteria staff, and friends of education. We all know it takes a village to run a good public school. Besides the obvious fellowship our twice-a-year luncheons provide our members, we continue to have exciting and informative programs which educate and inform us on everything from health, retirement living, and the current trends in public education. For example, Dr. Cashwell has graciously agreed to speak to our April luncheon. We also send out a newsletter twice a year with pertinent information about retirement and public school issues, and we provide information for volunteer and part-time positions available in Henrico County schools. We have several of our retirees who take on part-time positions and help out in the schools. We support two charities, both monetarily and in volunteer hours, the Henrico Education Foundation's SS Challenge and the Henrico Christmas Mother. Each year, we award $2,000 scholarships to one Henrico graduating senior who is planning on pursuing a degree in the field of education, and we hope, public education. We also award two $1,000 scholarships to present Henrico County public school employees who are taking classes to pursue another degree or obtain additional certification. We have a very active legislative committee who contact all Henrico County representatives to the Virginia General Assembly. Our legislative committee, unfortunately this year because of medical issues and family responsibilities, Tina took on this job all by herself. She made contact with every single one of the representatives, and I'll turn it over to Tina now so that she can tell you about some of the points that we stressed with our legislators.
I am the legislative chairman, and so what I do is, every year we make a list of our priorities, and I think you have a copy of those, and we look at your priorities and ours together, and we kind of go hand in hand. And then I just go down to the Capitol and personally meet with every delegate and every senator and talk about what our concerns are, and I like to advocate for all Henrico County employees, not just teachers, but everybody has concerns, and we all know that politics runs most of what we have to do. And this past General Assembly, the bills that were introduced and a lot that were passed, things about school counselors, calendars, and all the things that we've been asking for for years, so I think they are listening to us, and we feel like that if they know that their constituents are members of our organization, it's better for everybody.
We all appreciate you being here this afternoon and taking the time, and appreciate your patience with us. We had a long closed session, and I know you've been here a long time this afternoon, but I appreciate all the information that you presented. Don't know if anyone else has any questions right now?
Any questions or comments? Yes.
I just have a brief comment to thank you for your advocacy. Going to the General Assembly, members, that's quite the task, and to take that on, we appreciate you advocating for all of our employees. That's a big job, and we know that, but we really appreciate all the time that, I mean, because you're speaking from experience, and that's the best thing that you can bring is the heart of a teacher, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I'm sure that we all concur and appreciate your time today, but your years in supporting our students and continuing to support them, and I think I would join, my colleagues would join me in asking Dr. Cashwell if we can maybe review some of the things, and obviously the privacy issues and all prevent certain sharing of information, but if there's something that we can do more to enhance that transition and connection that we consider, maybe there is a way short of sharing the details, but that we could do, so.
Absolutely. Staff and I look forward to reconnecting with you and learning how we may be able to assist in moving your work forward.
Every one of the folks retiring can come across the stage or the podium at our retirement lunch, so I guarantee, at least five of us can tell them as they go across, "Don't forget. Don't forget the folks out in the lobby." But we appreciate y'all coming to that event as well, and we'll encourage people as they retire to stay connected with you so that you can keep doing the good work that you're doing. So thank you. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Pike, thank you for arranging that today. So, members of the Board, our next items are under the superintendent, so, Dr. Cashwell.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the first item, I'm asking for the Board's consideration for the recommendation for approval of the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-15 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct, and as always, names of students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
And for those who might be listening or in attendance, these student cases that we're going to be considering now are considered at great length, both in the closed session and in material that was shared securely with the Board prior to today's meeting. Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cox regarding the, to adopt superintendent's recommendation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-17 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for expulsion in case 18-19-S-17?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-18 for violation of the Student Code of Conduct.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for expulsion in student case number 18-19-S-18?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. The motion carries.
Thank you. And the final recommendation for approval of expulsions is related to student case number 18-19-S-19, also for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for expulsion regarding student case number 18-19-S-19?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve participation in an alternative program for student case numbers 18-19-S-15, also 18-19-S-17, and 18-19-S-18.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation for attendance in an alternative program for student case numbers 18-19-S-15, -17, and -18. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augmiron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I recommend that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Regarding the superintendent's recommendation, moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. And the Board has just approved Cara Jean O'Neill as Educational Specialist in Professional Learning and Leadership, as well as Kirk Eggleston as Principal at Gaetan Elementary School, and at our monthly meeting, we will have the opportunity to meet these individuals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. For the next item, under instruction, we have information related to a revision for the school year calendar, and we'll be seeking your approval as well this evening, and Dr. Tygen is here to share that information.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. It is my pleasure to come to you this afternoon about a revision to our current 2018-2019 school calendar that was originally approved in December of 2017. At that point in time, we know that primary elections in June 2019 had not been scheduled, and even just a few weeks ago, we were following a proposal in the General Assembly to move the June primary a week later so that it would be outside of our normal school year. Unfortunately, that proposal failed, and so thus today, I come before you to propose a change in our June calendar as part of the 2018-19 school calendar. I would recommend that the school board approve making Tuesday, June 11th, a student holiday and a staff clerical day. Graduations planned for June 11th would not be impacted and will proceed as scheduled at the Siegel Center. Underclassmen exams would begin one day earlier to accommodate the missed day during the current exam window. Luckily, we do have banked time remaining from all the inclement weather we had this year that we would still be in compliance with the number of instructional hours we are required to have. We also know that this may impact end-of-year celebrations at schools such as field days, awards assemblies, and promotion ceremonies, but last week, we did contact our principals and asked them to at least to start thinking about what the impact might be and what options they have. And so we would also proceed with a full communication plan moving forward should this change be approved today, to make June 11th a student holiday and a staff clerical day.
All right. Thank you. Members of the Board, this is something that we have known has been percolating out there and has had a lot of discussion from parents, particularly those whose children attend schools that serve as polling places, so it doesn't come as a surprise, but are there questions or comments that you would like to share before we, I think this is, before we take action?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Only a comment is just to thank Dr. Cashwell and Dr. Tygen and the staff for responding to those concerns that have been expressed by parents and by us, and I think this is just in the best interest and overall safety of our students, which is the reason for the change, so I am appreciative of the consideration of our request.
Anyone else? Yes, Mrs.?
Thank y'all for being proactive. We would much rather be proactive than reactive, and even though we haven't had any incidences in the state of Virginia, knock on wood, on a primary day, we certainly want to keep our students as safe as we can, so we appreciate y'all. I'm taking a look at this now, mid-year, and I support this.
Thank you. Sounds like somebody's moved and seconded, but was there further comment, Mr. Pike?
Yes, I too would like to thank the staff and the superintendent for the work they've done, and I wonder, as we look forward with the opportunity in 2021 to start schools before Labor Day, how this might be impacted in the future, and if that would eliminate us having to worry about that election day with an earlier start time, I think that would be interesting to take a look at. I think the other piece of that is, I've already heard from parents that are concerned about the upcoming presidential primaries in March of 2020, and being concerned about how that will impact, so I would hope that between our school board and county government officials that we can figure out a reasonable solution for that as well, but I thank you for what you've done with this, but looking down the road, if there's some adjustments we can make to maybe eliminate this problem, I would be in favor of it, so.
We do agree with you on that and taking the proactive approach, so it would be anticipated that we might be back. We know that the 2019-2020 calendar has already been approved, so we would need to bring that back to you with any changes relative to both the March primary as well as June primary next year, if there isn't legislation to change the June primary.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for approval of the revision to the 2018-2019 school calendar as been presented?
So moved.
Second.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. You take your choice who did what.
We'll leave that up to our clerics to figure it out.
Y'all sort that out down there for us. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries, and I'll just follow up on what Mr. Pike said in that, as we think about moving the beginning of the school year forward and have that discussion, this kind of points out the fact that we also have to be thinking about the end of the school year with graduations and all those other things that normally fall during that period of time, so there's a lot of work before we ever get to the decision of whether we do it or not, so just kind of points out the, all sides of that story, so. Let's see, okay. You still have your next item?
I do. I'll be ready for the next one.
Yes, please.
All right. In regards to instructional support, we have a presentation coming forward on special education, and this is, of course, a subcommittee report in response to the review of equity and parent engagement in special education in Henrico County that was conducted earlier in the year and presented this summer, and so Dr. Hamlet is here to provide an overview, and then we'll introduce Mac Baiton and Ray Beasley, who are co-chairing this committee and will be providing the report, and I know we may have some guests with us as well, but I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hamlet.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell. As you're aware, we have formulated five subcommittees of multiple stakeholder groups to dive deeper into the 27 recommendations from the Review of Equity and Parent Engagement in Special Education, and you've already heard three of the five subcommittees, and this afternoon you will hear from the fourth. And just as a reminder, as Dr. Cashwell said, each subcommittee is co-led by a Henrico County Public Schools Division Leader, so we have Mr. Mac Baiton here with us, the Director of CTE, and also, this group was co-led by Mr. Ray Beasley, who is a representative of our Special Education Advisory Committee, as well as the President-elect for the Henrico County NAACP. One thing that you will hear differently from this group is that they are going to identify priorities. The other subcommittees have identified recommendations to you that came directly from the report. This group is identifying priorities because Virginia Randolph, there was one recommendation in the report that was specific to Virginia Randolph, but there are threads throughout that report that have implications for instructional programming for Virginia Randolph. So as you hear those priorities, we just wanted you to know that it is not the recommendation or a priority of this subcommittee to close the Virginia Randolph program, so you will hear a lot of information about reimagining the instructional program that can then drive our decision-making as to how we might be able to revamp the program. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Baiton and Mr. Beasley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and guests. Tonight, it is a privilege to give you a brief update on the work that the programming subcommittee has done. Our subcommittee was comprised of very talented, invested parents and professionals that were committed to creating a programming at Virginia Randolph Education Center that would become a model for others. The team was comprised of individuals from exceptional education staff at VREC, central office administrators, instructional directors, parents, and school-based administrators from multiple levels and multiple locations. This team's passion and vision for the needs and goals of VREC helped drive this committee not only to developing a plan that would help VREC meet the needs of our current students, but provide programming that would reduce or eliminate the need for private daycare placement, K-12. The ultimate belief was that we can serve all of our students in-house. As the committee started meeting, the overarching goal became very apparent. The goal was to make VREC the model for outstanding programs serving K-12. After the initial large group meeting on October 29th, the group had multiple face-to-face meetings which allowed for a deep dive into the overall objective of the subcommittee, which was to determine what programming should be in place at VREC to serve our students and what would need to be done to accomplish this goal. The first meeting was held at Glen Allen High School to allow the team to create a vision of programs that should be included at VREC without thinking about the current facility. Once this vision was established, the remaining meetings took place at VREC while looking at the current program offerings. The goal of developing new opportunities while celebrating the current programming was the overarching focus of the team. Through this process, the team came up with 12 priorities that would allow the programs at VREC to become a model for exceptional education, K-12.
The first priority focuses on safety. The goal is to provide a safe and secure environment that offers maximum flexibility, allowing for the programming that is needed to ensure success of the students. As we considered this priority, it was obvious that safety was both an internal and external consideration. This led to a very detailed discussion on the building design and the campus at VREC. Spaces will need to be included for appropriate cooldown areas, electives, extracurricular activities, et cetera. The second priority from the programming committee was to implement programming that provides the social behavioral skills that will help students transition to post-secondary opportunities. For this priority, there will need to be opportunities for students to transition internally from self-contained environments to a larger environment, allowing students to move to a less restrictive environment. A short-term consideration to address this priority will be to develop a process to be followed for placement, transition, et cetera. The third priority is to ensure that the academic programs are provided that will prepare students to be life-ready by making sure that the opportunities lead to maximum academic growth and provide a seamless transition academically and programmatically to a comprehensive school or post-secondary opportunity. In order to accomplish this priority, VREC will need to provide equivalent programming to that of any comprehensive school, including electives and extracurricular activities. There will need to be internships and externship opportunities and work experiences for all students. and work experiences for all students, understanding that some students may enter the programs behind. There will need to be opportunities through programs like Ingenuity to allow students to catch up or advance academically. By utilizing a year-round approach, students would be able to move through the programs easier and have a better opportunity to not regress during the summer months. Priority four is to ensure that the students at VREC have the appropriate extracurricular opportunities for all students. These should closely mirror opportunities at the comprehensive schools. As we examined this priority, the team realized that this would be a great opportunity to partner with other organizations like Henrico Parks and Recreation to provide therapeutic recreation opportunities. Also partnering with other after-school programs such as the YMCA would allow for unique opportunities for students to experience extracurricular activities beyond the confines of the school. Utilizing funds from Creative Foundation, costs could be offset to ensure the students have access to many different opportunities. Priority five, from the programming, the programming subcommittee focused on student outcomes. The goal is to implement programming that prepares students for college and/or careers. The students should be life-ready and prepared for a transition to post-secondary opportunity. There are several considerations that would need to be considered to help with this priority. The first is that programming will need to be added that would expose students to opportunities similar in nature to those in comprehensive schools. That will prepare them for post-secondary opportunities. This would include opportunities like internships, externships, work experience, independent living skills, advocacy opportunities included, special interests and hobbies. Also key, the overall success of our students at VREC would be the development of a foundation designed to offer unique funding pathways for programs and students at VREC, ensuring that every student receives appropriate mental, physical assessment supports that are needed to be successful. Sixth priority, there would be a social worker or psychologist team for both elementary and high school-level students. There should also be a full-time occupational therapist to work with the students to help support and meet the sensory needs.
The seventh priority of the committee was to ensure that VREC will be adequately staffed to support the overall programming. Staffing, staffing needs are critical for the success of any schools. But for VREC, there will need to be specially-trained staff in place to meet the needs of the diverse student body. This will include elective teachers, fine art teaching teachers, staffing for behavioral support, therapeutic support, as well as a full complement of academic teachers that can provide the support and instruction needed for students. Along with special support, the staffing should mirror that of a comprehensive school. Priority eight is to ensure the staff has the appropriate and ongoing training and certifications. Considerations that will need to be addressed with this priority is that the training will need to be consistent and ongoing. Any new staff member will need to complete a prescribed training. The training will include topics like PBIS, restorative practices, trauma-informed care, et cetera, along with expected training that all teachers are required to have. Also, bus drivers will need to have specialized training as well, since they are the first and the last person to greet every student each day. Priority nine is to provide an extended-day program that is physically and emotionally safe. The programming should be fun and provide students the opportunity to grow and learn about new interests. Considerations for an extended-day program will be to ensure that the staff is trained to provide meaningful experiences for the students. Transportation will also need to be considered, as well as the appropriate staffing to maintain the needed supports for the extended-day program.
Priority 10 would be to provide a program that would operate year-round, much like private day settings. This would require additional staffing to avoid burnout. Ideally, having two overlapping staffs would provide the needed support and also extra time to allow for teams of teachers to work with students. As students gain skills, the year-round would provide, the year-round school would provide time and support for students as they enter internship and externship or work experiences. The incorporation of extracurricular activities will be essential to help the students stay excited and engaged. Community partnerships will need to provide opportunities outside of the traditional school setting. And also, the foundation can provide funding for incentives to help keep students motivated. Priority 11 focuses on the image of VREC. It is important that the community, students and school system view the programs as a viable option for students. Considerations to make this possible include providing opportunities for teachers and administrators from other schools to learn more about VREC programming and engage in professional learning opportunities. There should be ongoing information and training for comprehensive school administrators on the process for placement and re-entry. There should be intentional efforts to promote the mission and goals of VREC and opportunities to celebrate the accomplishments of students. Opportunities for the students to showcase their abilities and their skills, such as catering events or building things for the community need to be incorporated. The final priority is to ensure that the curriculum at VREC prepares students to be life-ready and mirror that of a comprehensive school. This curriculum should be designed so that students can reach their maximum potential and not be limited by resources. There should be opportunities for online learning. The facility should allow for a full curriculum K through 12, and the staffing should be adequate to support the needs. The students complete their program of study at VREC, they should have an exit plan and support to transition to the next chapter in their life.
As we looked at the priorities, it became acutely obvious that human resources impact on the success of the programming would be essential. Along with the basic staffing of the additional teachers, staffing for electives, career coach, real-time tutors for online learning, transitional staff and new programs will be needed. The staff will need to be unique for each level, elementary, middle and high. These staff members will need to be, if at all possible, multi-certified. There should be a refined selection interview process to help find the right teachers, administrators and support staff. Expectations for training and growth will need to be a part of the contractual agreement. Even transportation staff will need to be specially-trained to help support the mission of the school. Special-designed teams will be in place for each student, meeting regularly, to review the process and make recommendations to help ensure success. As the student matures, they too can be a part of this team.
There will be a need for additional resources. Funding will be needed for additional staffing to meet the needs of the programs and allow for the needed expansion of new programming. Training for all staff will need to be ongoing and funded to ensure that the teachers are highly qualified to meet the needs of the students. As the size and scope of the program changes, there will need to be funding for additional space needs and modifications. When looking at the student learners in the workforce, funding to provide or supplement unique training opportunities for students will be needed. Extended-day and year-round programs will need to be funded, including unique transportation costs and possible taking students to work experience opportunities. The programming should provide students with the opportunity to reach maximum potential and to provide life-ready education. We will be happy to take any questions at this time. But before we take questions, I just want to emphasize a couple of things. As a parent on this committee, I'm in awe because this gave me the opportunity to see the real work and investment of the existing staff. And so, I want to take this opportunity to emphasize that while this report talks about the way we can grow, I want you to know from a parent's perspective that we have an outstanding staff already doing great things. The second thing I want to emphasize is, as we look at this project, as a parent and as a community leader, I can't emphasize enough the value of making sure that we continue to honor the legacy of Virginia Randolph. And so, I would hope that whatever consideration goes into this project keeps in mind that it's already in the perfect location. With that said, I'd like to thank you again, if you have any questions.
Well, I will start by just saying thank you for the great work. And are there other members of the committee here today?
Yes, sir. We have the principal, Mr. Jesse Casey. And he has a couple of staff members with him. And they are a very dedicated team at VREC.
And so, we thank you for the work on this, but also, as Rajus did, to thank you for the work that's already ongoing, the tremendous work that's already ongoing. Members of the Board, who has our first question?
Should I go first?
Yeah, sure, please.
Again, I want to thank the committee for your, your hard work. And I've had an opportunity to kind of marinate over your, your report for a while. And I've got a couple of questions. Now, Dr. Hamlet, you might want to answer this one for me. Mr. Beasley alluded to it, either you or Mac initially in your, your opening comments, but you were very specific in, one of the stated goals was to reduce our need to outsource. So, the question I raise first and foremost, how many of our students are we outsourcing?
As far as students who are placed privately?
Mm-hmm.
A little over 200.
So, do we know the cost? I'm sure it varied, it, it fluctuates. So, 200, what's the average cost of that, of us outsourcing?
About $70,000 a year, but it depends on the placement.
That's 70,000 per child?
Correct. So, some private placements are more expensive than others. The tuition is, length of stay is a factor, the level of service is a factor. And as this group alluded to, year-round programming is also a factor.
So, you're saying almost $150,000 a year? 70,000 times 200, am I, is that the right math?
The average.
Is it four point, yeah, is it?
But the average cost of tuition across the board for private day is about $70,000, yes.
Go ahead, you want to?
No, no. Well, on that same point, and some of those funds are, are school funds, but also some are, are.
But they're funded through the children's services, right?
Right.
Because I would be interested to see specifically how much of the cost we are incurring. I'd love to know that, just to, because in this, if I'm not mistaken, you all are saying that we need a new facility, correct?
Correct.
In order for us to, to be able to house and not outsource, will we be able to maintain the majority of our students? I'm sure there might be some extreme cases that we still have to send them that we may not. Or are you saying if we revamp our program, revamp our facility, we should be able to, for the most part, 100% with the right staffing, right facility, accommodate our own children?
So, our goal is to accommodate our own children. The way that special education regulations are written, there's a continuum of services. So, we can't guarantee that 100% of our students would remain in-house or in our comprehensive schools or even at Virginia Randolph, because it is up to the IEP team to make that decision as to what's the best placement for that child on the continuum of services.
Okay, so, when we look at these, these, these priorities, have we considered a timeline for the implementation? I mean, this is kind of the aggregate, this is the macro, but is there a timeline for implementation?
Yes, so, this is big picture. Next board meeting, you will hear from the Family Engagement Subcommittee. And then, all of the co-leaders will be brought back together so that we can streamline all of the recommendations, as well as the priorities from this subgroup. And that group, our larger group, will meet throughout the summer in hopes to come up with an even deeper dive in a timeline, as well as budget implications. Because as you probably noticed, some of these recommendations and priorities have overlapped.
Well, because that kind of segues to the next question I was going to ask. Have we ranked the priorities and which ones will be implemented first based upon, based upon the cost, implement, cost implications and effectiveness? So, what you're saying is, that's kind of dualistic in nature, that we're going to take the cost, take the priorities and then come back with, this is what we expect?
Correct. Because we know we have some low-cost or no-cost quick wins that we can go ahead and implement now across all of the subgroups. So, yes, we'll bring everyone together and come up with a more comprehensive timeline and plan.
All right, thank you. Now, can Al, can you come here real quick, Al? So, when I looked at the capital improvement plan, I noticed that Virginia Randolph is scheduled 2022, 2023. I think it was renovation planning and construction with no funding source identified, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so, the school was constructed in 1960, it's 59 years old. So, the question I raise is that in light of, you know, kind of their recommendation, in light of our CIP, no funding source, how do we go through the process of determining, can we expedite, you know, moving forward as far as that kind of process with the CIP, no funding source, and kind of knowing how important and how impactful this is?
Well, the first step, you and the other board members approved for our department to do pretty much a facility analysis, assessment for all of the projects in the proposed FY20 CIP, specifically for the year four and five, and that's where Virginia Randolph lands. So, at the next board meeting, we're going to be asking you to approve the proposal for an architect to assess all of the, all 12 of those buildings, one of which will be Virginia Randolph. And we will look at that to see, from a facility standpoint only, which buildings we believe could be renovated, which ones might be replaced, or should, should the whole place be renovated or replaced? You know, we, we wanted to make good, informed decisions now that we've embarked on replacing two of, two of our latest high schools, Holland Springs and Tucker. So, once that's done, it would be working with you and the other board members when we develop our next CIP. If we believe that Virginia Randolph is a greater priority than where it is, though I will say, it's in the first year of the unfunded projects, and I think it might be the first project. But if there is, then for the board, we would have to work collectively and the superintendent working to see what ways we might be able to accelerate that project and move that forward, if that was the will of the board.
I appreciate that, because like I said, when looking at where we are now, where it is located in light of what they're proposing, it seems to me that this is kind of a red light, high priority issue in regards to this, this hu- huge population of our students, that we want to make sure that they have the best facilities and the best programs in regards to that. So, that, that's very exciting for me. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Would you like, yeah, sure, we'll stay on this side.
Thank you all for that. I tell you, 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 Mr. Beasley said he was in awe of our staff. And I tell you, I'm in awe of work of the group. I mean, it's an amazing job, and y'all continue to blow me away each time that y'all, your group has come up here. A group of volunteers that love our kids and are working together to make things better for, for our students. So, thank you all for what y'all do. It's a very proactive approach there. I had a question. I love the idea of the year-round approach and having that option for our parents as well as for our students. And I thought the rebranding piece is a real important priority as well. And I know Mr. Baiton and I have dealt with that a lot with our career and technical education programs too. But that rebranding will be an important piece. And I think after we continue to have some of the conversations we're going to be having this year in some of our work sessions, we will be closer to that and having our community to see how much we do prioritize changes in this area. You had mentioned something about, or actually mentioned several times, about internships and externships. And we do need to increase those, and we need to increase extracurricular activities. But currently, aren't, are we doing internships and extra ship, externships at VREC? And what are they?
We have, at this point in time, very limited internships where the students are actually doing jobs around the school. But I think the, the goal is to find what every student's passion is and find a way to capitalize on that. Because when you see the independence that a student gains from doing a job, whether it's in school or working for someone else, and the emotional value it has for the young person, the opportunities are there to really capitalize on that.
Okay, so, there's minimal right now. And for the extracurricular activities piece, there's minimal or nil to that? Are there clubs or, I mean, what's now, any, Joe's thinking. Nothing now?
If we may, I'd love to have Jesse come up and.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you all for giving this opportunity to you. We do have in-house type clubs for VREC that are run by Carrie Tracy and other members where we provide experiences for the students based on the talents of our already-existing staff. We have staff who have specific jobs, but they have talents and passions that they take on, art, music and that kind of thing. So, we try to use our staff to expose our students to those things that aren't formally there, but we want to give them those experiences.
And for sports, it's just like open gym, is that what I hear?
For sports at VREC. For sports at VREC, it's more just the PE program, and we do try to have some fun things that we do from time to time, but there's no formal sports in comparison to AVR where the high school students are able to participate in their homeschool sports programs. It is not available to the elementary level, because those, elementary don't have those things either.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Cock. Are there others? Mrs. Augman?
I've just, y'all have asked some really good questions, and I know for the sake of time, I'm just gonna, a couple of things jumped out at me that I really want to applaud you for, and that's looking at ways to offset the costs of extracurriculars for our students, because for so many, that is such an impediment to getting involved in things, so looking for ways, I think that's great. But it seemed to me that this thing has been well thought out, and you're doing this with a lot of, with a lot of lenses to look for opportunities for our students in a very thoughtful way. So I really appreciate that effort and the effort to mirror a comprehensive school, because that's, that gives those kids, we talk about it all the time, of making them life-ready, and that's the way to do it, to give them that experience they'll need for after. So I think it's great, I applaud the idea too of the extended day activities. That's all good things that we're hearing, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the effort.
Mr. Pike, did you have anything?
Just along the same lines, I really love the idea of the year-round school. I think that has unlimited potential, and I hope that you will be able to continue to pursue that. And I like the idea too of the life skills being life-ready. I think those are just really critical pieces of it, and I commend you and your team for your work, and I hope that we can find ways to be supportive as you move forward, but thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. I think that sums it up well, so thank you, gentlemen, and thank you to the other members of your group. I think our next item is with operations, and Mr. Shiroki?
That's right. The final two items I'm bringing forth under operations relate to approving a change order and awarding an annual contract, and Mr. Shiroki has come forth, should you have any questions? For the first item, the superintendent is requesting the school board approve change order number 007 in the amount of $658,020 to the construction contract with United Refrigeration of Virginia Incorporated and an additional project allowance of $95,000 for parking, $95,000 for parking lot expansion and improvements at Crestview Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Is there a motion regarding change order 007?
Don't move.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of change order 007, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Very mistaken.
It was seconded by Mr. Pike, I'm sorry. Moved and seconded.
I was laughing through it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. That passes, Madam Superintendent?
All right, thank you. And finally, the superintendent requests that the school board award an annual contract to InfraMap Corp. for subsurface utility designating and locating services.
Thank you, this is an annual contract, I understand. So is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for the annual contract for subsurface utility designating and locating? It's been moved by Reverend Cooper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it? And that's the last item from the superintendent?
That is the last item until we'll bring forth our recognitions for Youth Art Month.
Yes, which is, which is set to begin at 4:30. Is there any unfinished business or to be presented by the board, or new business under the same category?
Mr. Chair, I do have one item.
Yes.
I guess it would go under unfinished business. Just to, I'll take one minute to give the board just a brief update. Mr. Pike and I had a meeting last night with some of our constituents in, at Pocahontas Middle School in reference to the Math Science Innovation Center, and that gave an opportunity for some of the people that have come to our meetings and spoken to us to voice their concerns, their, get some information, and I wanted to thank some members of our staff who were there to bring them up to date on what we are doing in STEM education. I think they were all greatly impressed by it, so just really appreciated them coming. But in a nutshell, I think we have some communication that we need to do with parents in regard to our decision to withdraw from the consortium, and so Mr. Pike and I plan to develop a summary of that meeting and share it with the other board members and Dr. Cashwell and the staff members to make sure that we're all aware of parent concerns, and so going forward, we can learn from these kinds of events when they happen, just for transparency purposes, that we make sure that our citizens know more about the decisions that we've made or are getting ready to make. And so anyway, look forward for that to come from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, okay. And we, I believe that from what I understand, there's two sets of takeaways, takesaways. One is the process, transparency, communication, and then the other is the substance of what is going to occur now that, you know, going forward, and to make certain that we have the ability to, that our students have the opportunity to participate in some of the regional and national events that were otherwise under that umbrella. So, but thank you on behalf of the whole board for participating in that and organizing that, and then for staff for being there as well. Members of the board, there being no further business except the announcement of our upcoming meeting, which our next meeting will be March 28th, which will be a work session at 2:00, followed by our monthly meeting at 6:30. The work session time, begin time is subject to change. We will adjourn here until we reconvene at 4:30 to recognize our art students. So thank you to everyone for your efforts this afternoon, and don't go anywhere. Good afternoon. We'll now reconvene the Thursday, March 14, 2019 work session, and we have one item left on the agenda, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, for the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the final item this afternoon, it is my pleasure to be able to provide an opportunity for the school board and I to recognize students whose artwork was selected for the annual school board exhibit in conjunction with, of course, the celebration of Youth Art Month. And for those of you who have, are frequent visitors to the room, you'll notice we have new artwork around us, very beautiful artwork, and we welcome our guests, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike Calafattis, who will get us started in our celebration and recognitions.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, guests, and student artists, welcome to the annual School Board Student Art Show. My name is Mike Calafattis, and I'm honored to be the art specialist for Henrico County Schools. First thing I'd like to do is thank the parents, teachers, and administrators who have joined us today to celebrate Youth Art Month. If, if you are a parent or a member of the family of an artist here today, please stand If you are an art teacher, please stand and be recognized. If you are an administrator joining us today, please stand and be recognized. Youth Art Month is a nationwide and annual observance that is held each March to emphasize the value of art education for all children and to encourage public support for quality art programs. From special events, activities, contests, and opportunities, Youth Art Month is a celebration of the power that art brings. Art is truly the literacy of the heart. My hope is that every child here today has a greater appreciation for the arts because of our division's wonderful support of the arts. Whether they become artists or go into other fields of study, I hope they understand the significance the visual arts has on their lives. Researchers have shown that integrating the core curricula with the visual arts encourages multiple perspectives and avenues of access supporting engagement and understanding. The visual arts deepens and personalizes the learning experience. Youth Art Month helps to direct attention to the value of art education and its ability to promote divergent and critical thinking, multicultural awareness, technical proficiency, and expressive skills. The arts and arts education provides the connections to essential human experiences. Our students need both skill and creativity to successfully navigate the complex and ever-changing modern world. These displays show Henrico County School Board and Dr. Cashwell's commitment and understanding of the value of visual arts education in educating the total student. The framed pieces you see here today at Newbridge and at Central Office will be on display until next year at this time. This is a tremendous honor. All teachers were asked to pick just one piece to represent their students for the year. At this time, our school board and Dr. Cashwell would like to recognize all students who have joined us here today to accept their awards. I'd like to invite our elementary students, artists, to line up to my right. Please have your certificate in hand, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. With a name like Calafattis, I completely, completely understand. So I'd like my elementary artists, if y'all could just come on up and line up. Lorena Nicholas Varela. At this time, I'd like to invite our middle school student artists to line up to my right. Please have your certificate in hand. At this time, I'd like to invite our high school student artists to line up to my right. Please have your certificate in hand. And anybody else here that we did not announce, please come up, you can come on up right now, we'll go ahead and call your name. So if you got here a little bit late, I know there was a lot of traffic, please come on up right now. I'd like to recognize three pieces that were selected to go beyond our Central Office display. The Virginia School Board Association has a regional contest each year in March to select the work that will hang in the state superintendent's office. This year, the pieces that were chosen to recognize Henrico at the regional contest were, and when I call your name, will you just stand up if you're here? Melanie Leady from Lakeside Elementary, art teacher Amy Tausner. Ainsley Taylor from Shore Palm Middle School, teacher Julie Johnson. And Mars Beasley from Verona High School, art teacher Dawn Bass. And Dr. Cashwell, every year we do take a picture with y'all, with the entire group. So, but before we do that, I would like to just invite everybody, I'd like to invite artists, parents, administrators, to join us for a reception in the multipurpose room at Central Office Building. So we caravan from here over to the Central Office Building where we have cookies and punch. Also, we have, we have lists with where your child's artwork is, so if you're wondering, you know, is it in here, or is it Central Office, we have a list of where the work is. But at this time, I think what we do is we like just the students. If y'all could come up, we're gonna walk on up, and we're gonna take a group photo with the school board and Dr. Cashwell. with the School Board and Dr. Cashwell.
All right, members of the board, that concludes our work here today. Again, our upcoming meeting will be March 28th at 2:00 PM for the work session, subject to change, at 6:30 for the monthly meeting. Everybody, please go enjoy the reception.